You are correct that this is that budget.
Yes, and this I sat on the, uh, the board for Division Hospitalization, um, oh, for a number of years when I was previously commissioned, so. I make a motion to approve.
I was gonna ask Ian or.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ian or Shane if they had a comment on what you've heard from Travis, myself, does he have any?
No, with everything we've heard, uh, I, I think this is a necessary position. I, I, I do understand that we are gonna be making some tough decisions this year. But, uh, until those numbers become a reality and we see exactly where we're at, I still think we have to keep moving forward and doing the business of the people. And so I, 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 with everything that's been brought to us, I, I think we need to move forward with this.
Okay, and so we listen to all, all aspects and, uh, I respect that and I respect everybody's opinion. And so if we get a motion and a vote, we'll see how it goes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Shane. Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, Richard votes none. Okay. We're going on to item five. We are at 10 o'clock, so I think we'll run Elizabeth just the way they should. But let's go back to the 10 o'clock. On page three, the 10 o'clock, uh, is the Natural Resources. Item one is Discussion Information Only Regarding the White Pine County Natural Resource and Public Lands Issues Tracking List and Status of RCI's Budget Through Six Months, Jeremy Drew, Project Manager for RCI. Jeremy, are you online?
Yes, Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Uh, go ahead.
All right, item one that we have for you, we changed it up a little bit in, uh, in the new year and for our tracking list. Uh, the front end is more six months into our year-long contract, so wanted to give you a budget update where we were, which will set up the additional agenda items we have here. Um, just a couple of items to point out on the tracking list, Pine and Wawa Valley. Uh, you'll recall that's the water export project in Utah. Uh, scoping for that was open in August. There's a cooperating agency MOU in place. And I plan to participate in a meeting, uh, on January 26th on that project. I can kind of see where things are going. The EIS webpage says that they do anticipate a winter or spring 2020 draft release, so that's when we can publicly review all the documents. If you recall, the cooperating agency process is under, um, a confidentiality agreement. So we won't be able to bring any of that information, uh, to the board until that draft EIS goes public. Um, looking, uh, looking back a little bit more, we still haven't heard anything from Division of Water Resources on the proposed orders for hydrographic basins. To my knowledge, uh, no other counties are aware of any decisions that have been made. Um, I'm sure you're aware, but it was kind of quietly transitioned at the end of the year where Tim Wilson, the state engineer, uh, retired. And so we have a new acting, um, state engineer, Adam Sullivan. And I'm sure he's got plenty on his plate, let alone the hydrographic basin orders. So, um, still not a lot of direction on where the state engineer wants to go. I, I know they received a lot of feedback, including from this county. Um, you'll recall before Christmas, uh, in December, there was a, um, the Nevada Economic Assessment Project is being conducted by UNR Cochrane Extension. Had a community meeting. Uh, there is actually an open public survey now, uh, which should be open for the next handful of, of weeks. I will make sure this commission has a link. Um, it's a pretty short survey. I would encourage the commissioners as well as the members of PULAC and the Water Advisory Committee to take that survey, only because it kind of maps out, uh, the things that are important to the county, both socially and economically. And that kind of ties right into some of our T policies when we talk about public lands and, uh, public land management issues. So I will forward that. Um, Robinson Mine, uh, we'll talk about on item four. Um, they have some comments that are due. I was able to attend the virtual public meeting on January 6th. Uh, Bald Mountain Mine, um, just issued, uh, a letter inviting the county, um, to express its interest in cooperating agency. Uh, my recommendation would be to express interest, um, and, and probably sign an MOU on that. I know Robinson's important to the county. Um, from a multitude of, of issues. And excuse me, I'm sorry, that's Bald Mountain Mine. Uh, they need a reply by January 14th, so Chair, I can work with you if, uh, if you think that's appropriate. At this point, it's kind of an informal thing, uh, to indicate our, our interest coming in cooperating agency, the more formal memorandum of understanding will follow.
Yeah, I think we, we definitely want to do that and support our mining industry. We can, you and I can sit down and maybe, uh, discuss this and, and agree to it. And then do ratification on our first meeting, uh, you know, cause tomorrow is the four, or Friday is the 14th, right? Thursday. So I think.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Is that okay, Brian?
Mm-hmm.
And I, is that okay with you, Jeremy?
Yeah, I, I actually think Chair, um, you know, if there's an interest, just an email back to the project manager, um, is probably sufficient at this point. And then I think the ratification would be similar to what we did with Robinson and Pine and Wawa. When the memorandum of understanding comes back, you know, I think that's the point that we would maybe ratify the, the full board.
Okay, if you'll go ahead and do that, they won't take care of it. That's, that's a good way to do it. Thank you. Is there anything, anything else on the, uh, on item, on item one? Anything else on that? That is just information only.
The only other thing I have for you, Chairman, is just a checkpoint on our budget, which will kind of lead us into item two, if you're ready for that.
Yeah, should I just go to item two then, Brian? Or should I listen to this one?
Yeah, let, let him go through his checklist first and then we'll segue into item two.
Go ahead and go through your checklist and then we'll go on to, after we hear that, we'll go on to item, uh, B, item two. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, just quickly, um, because we do have some task order amendments, I just wanted to kind of go over the spreadsheet we have on, on where we are with budget. If you'll recall, uh, when we signed our contract in, uh, June, we had designated, um, $25,000, uh, as a starting point for our budget. And I believe, uh, remaining $25,000 was earmarked, um, for contingency, not really knowing how much, uh, public land issues or how many were gonna come up uh, over the course of the year. Um, the volume has certainly been high, even higher than I would have anticipated. And that's not unique to White Pine County. That's, uh, been an issue across all the counties we represent. Um, so at this point, uh, we've, um, pretty much exhausted our current approved work orders. And what we're asking for in Agenda Item Two is to supplement Agenda Item One. Agenda, Agenda, or excuse me, Phase One is the item where we cover all of, uh, these meetings, PULAC, Water Advisory Committee. We've been able to be very efficient, um, even though it's not my favorite platform between Zoom and the telephone, we've saved a lot of budget, um, by reducing our travel. And we've also covered a lot of minor items, so all the Wild Horse and Borough Comment Letters that we were able to put together, we've done under this item. And then at this point, we've only had kind of two bigger projects warranted, uh, their own phases of work. And that was the FERC comments for the pump storage project, uh, as well as the basin designation hearings. One of them we did right at budget, the other one we, we did under budget. Um, so what we're, what we're suggesting going forward is reprogramming, uh, the remaining budget we have under Phase Two into Phase One. Uh, a budget of $1,400 to finish the Robinson Mine Draft EIS comments. And then, um, putting the rest of the initial $25,000 into Phase One, uh, which will cover all our meeting requirements through the end of the year. Uh, the other thing that I may request some feedback from the board on, um, we know there's some, you know, bigger issues sitting out there that are likely to pop up this spring. Uh, the Pine Valley Water Project, as I mentioned, EIS is coming up. Um, Bald Mountain Cooperation Agency. And at this point, we're not sure, you know, when that will come out and how much of a workload that'll be. Department of Interior is still proposing some March grazing regulation changes. Uh, and then we have the White Pine Pump Storage and other renewable energy projects on the horizon. And so, uh, we may, uh, want to consider or look at the potential of a contract amendment at the next, one of the upcoming meetings um, to pull a bit more of that contingency and to cover some of those bigger anticipated items.
Okay, is that it?
Uh, this.
Okay, that's just an update, and we're gonna move on to item B, or item two on page three. It's a discussion for possible action, the approval of two amended Phase One, Phase Two, and the new, and one new Phase Four Task Order Amendments for RCI. Jeremy?
Uh, Jeremy Drew, for your record, Project Manager with Resource Concepts. Uh, again, the amendment for Phase One is really just to add additional budget, uh, to carry us through, uh, the end of June and cover all the meetings and any minor items that come up. Um, Phase Two, uh, that phase is complete. Uh, we're just reprogramming the remaining budget of Phase One. Uh, and Phase Four, um, covers our Robinson Mine Draft EIS comments, uh, with a budget requested of $1,400. Happy to answer any questions, Chairman.
We have the funding available for that a little bit?
Yeah.
Anybody else got a question? That was my only question, was making sure we had the funding available. Okay. Uh, that being said, and not hearing any other comment, I'll ask for a motion to approve, uh, Phase One, Phase Two, and the new one, Phase Four Task Order Amendments.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, none, pass unanimous. Item Three, Discussion for Possible Action, the Approval of a Letter Supporting the N4 Grazing Board's Request for Emergency Horse Gathers in the Chin Creek Basin area. Jeremy?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, for the record, Jeremy Drew, Project Manager with Resource Concepts. Uh, just prior to Christmas, we received, uh, as a carbon copy, a letter from the N4 Grazing Board to the Director of Nevada BLM. Uh, kind of basically issuing a plea to resolve some of the wild horse overpopulation issue, especially in the face uh, of the dry weather conditions out there. Um, they were talking pretty specifically to the Chin Creek area. And they actually, in their letter, had included some photos of how things have gotten, even in the absence of any cattle grazing or domestic stock grazing in that allotment. Um, unfortunately, I think the issue is, is broader than just the Chin Creek area. And so, uh, what we've done in this letter is in addition to kind of reinforcing the N4 plea and reinforcing the observations of some of the resource damage that's gone, gone on. Um, we're really saying the same issues playing out across the county where horses are found. And, you know, we kind of reiterate that we've done our part in being engaged in comments for the gatherer days. Uh, but we really feel that there's, you know, immediate need to take action and, and try and reduce the impacts, uh, not only on range land resources, but obviously some very valuable water resources in the county. And so, um, the letter's in your packet. You know, I think it's, it's sound and I think it'll be a, a nice boost to N4's request. Uh, it's directed to the State Director, um, but I think it's wise to see CR Congressional delegation as well as some of our state representatives, because I know this is something that is on everyone's radar right now. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone?
No, Jeremy, I thought that was a very good letter. Um, that said, I think that we ought to go ahead and include our district manager.
Good, good answer, Commissioner.
Okay, and, um, I think that this, this is, it shows even more support in regards to the, the letter that, um, Travis was talking about.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the letter supporting the N4 Grazing Board.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Move to first.
Motion by Travis.
I'll second.
Second by Lori. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, pass unanimous. Item Four, page three, Discussion for Possible Action, the Approval of a Comment Letter Regarding the Draft EIS Environmental Impact Statement for Robinson Mine Expansion. Jeremy Drew, and I also see Frederick here.
Yep.
So please, let's, let's let Frederick come up and speak, Jeremy, and then you can add whatever you'd like. How's that?
You bet.
Okay, Frederick, please come forward. State your name when you, for the record.
For the record, my name is, uh, Frederick Partey. I'm the Environmental Manager for Robinson Mine. So I'm here this morning because we had the EIS on the agenda. Uh, all I wanted to say is, um, asking the county to actually write this letter to support, uh, the mine expansion. I know you've done that in the past, and so we are relying on you to continue to do that, to support mine. So the mine can be here, we can still employ people in the county, and people will continue to stay in the county. People like me who came from elsewhere because of the mine. So that's all I have. And mainly, I want to be here also. So if there are questions from the public or from the commissioners with regards to this expansion, I'm also here to respond, uh, to those questions as well.
Just for the record, the, uh, mine life with the expansion has gone up to what?
It's gone up to 2028. So currently, it's up to 2024. With this expansion, it allows us another three to four more years.
Perfect, that's really good news. Anyone else got a comment or, or question on Frederick or Robinson Mine? Anyone? No? So Jeremy, I'll let you comment if you'd like to add something to what, uh, we're on that same agenda item, if you'd like to add to what, uh, Mr. Partey said.
You bet, and I think, uh, his comments are, are very timely and fulbright and well. So for your record, Jeremy Drew, Resource Project Manager with RCI. Um, this is one of those rare instances where, um, some of the timelines, uh, didn't match up well. And so the public meeting was held, uh, on Wednesday night after support materials were due. I know the letter itself didn't get posted, so, uh, Chairman, my thought was to step through, uh, what we have drafted and some of the main points, uh, so that everyone's aware of that. Um, if we want to table formal approval until the next meeting, uh, I am fine with that. It would be after the BLM's uh, comment period closes, but we could always, uh, send them a note and say, you know, a letter is forthcoming. Uh, however the, the commission wants to handle it is fine with me. Um, but some of the key points, uh, and this fits right into Frederick's comments. Uh, paragraph one, this commission fully supports the Robinson Mine and KGM, uh, KGHM Robinson. Uh, more specific to the proposed action, which is Alternative A, the county supports extension of the mine life by four years to 2028. Um, supports resumption of mining in the Liberty Pit, including associated expansion of de-watering, construction of a King Waste Rock Dump, and modification of the Drew Wash Caming Storage Facility. Um, there is an alternative in there, Alternative B, that would provide a smaller footprint. Uh, the King Waste Rock Dump would be slightly reduced, and, and some of that waste rock would go into the Route East Pit. Um, we indicate that that may be something of interest to the county if, uh, KGHM Robinson finds it to be fiscally viable and not to impact future operations, uh, specifically any plans for future mining in the Route East Pit. Uh, the one thing that they do on down the road, I know, uh, County Road 44A, uh, which is talked about in a few places in the EIS, is currently closed. Um, the proposed King Waste Rock Dump, uh, would, would cover about .2 miles of that road. One of the things the Draft EIS talks about is the potential, uh, at the conclusion of mining, to either reroute or reopen that road. Uh, and it would kind of reduce the overall impacts. I'm not sure, um, if Alternative A would change the feasibility of that with the Liberty East Pit moving further east, uh, and, and retailings. But I did indicate the county would certainly be interested in, in that opportunity when mining is, uh, is finished. I know that's not a viable alternative while mining's going. That road runs basically from Highway 50 to Highway 6. Um, right through, right in between two of those pits. So, um, realizing that's something that would happen in the future, I just have the, the county's interest in working with the mine on, uh, on that potential. Um, other than that, the only two things that I thought, uh, maybe could be bolstered in the Draft EIS. Uh, it's, it's pretty clear to me that Robinson is doing all the things they need to do to follow the state Nevada, uh, regulations as it, uh, regarding state drafts mitigation. Um, there's some information they're waiting back from on the state that I think would be good to incorporate into the final EIS, just to commemorate they've done what they need to do. Um, and then there's not a lot in the EIS, uh, specifically to, um, fire management. But I know Robinson is doing things out there, so even just to mention, uh, their existing programs, if you use the word fire, would be great. Um, we worked with BLM prior to some of the inputs and comments on socioeconomic analysis. We express our appreciation, and then again, uh, close the letter with our support for the mine and, uh, the project going forward. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or maybe Frederick could add some more input on the, the points that we raised. Thank you.
Do you guys have anyone else to add to it?
Yes.
Uh, Jeremy Drew, thank you so much, uh, for the support there. I have, um, response that I want to provide now, if, if that is appropriate.
Sure.
Uh, the first one is Alternative B. So, yes, I think the mine also prefers Alternative B. Because Alternative B, actually, will use Route East, uh, backfill, and then will reduce the King, um, Waste Rock, the, the King Waste Rock Facility. When that happens, we spare 44A. So we do not touch 44A at all. And so 44A will be there. We currently have an agreement with the county where if there is an emergency, uh, the county can come through the mine, will stop mining, and then there is a road that we made that two years ago. I invited the county commissioners to come see. They came out and saw it. And so we have an avenue that they can connect to Highway 6 if they need to get to land, and there's a problem on Highway 6 from the city of Ely. So we do love Alternative B, because I don't want to touch 44A, um, right now. So that's my comment on that. And that also addresses the 44A issue. Now, if for some reason we decide to touch 44A, which, um, I, I can promise you we will now, we will make sure we bring it back as we have previously promised. And then we later on decided that it wasn't, uh, a good alternative. That was going to go behind the Liberty Pit, so we stopped that. So we will try. Not only does 44A is in the footprint of the Kingdom, but we also have the Route GIB Pipeline going through that same area, and we don't want to relocate that pipeline for the fourth time. So there are a couple of reasons why we have to, um, leave 44A alone. There's another thing also that probably a lot of people may not be aware of, but the Shossoonie Tribe has a spiritual center right, uh, west of 44A. So if we go to 44A, we'll be getting close to that spiritual site. And this is a cultural, uh, thing that was identified, and I can't, I personally, I don't know a lot about it. It's been handled by BLM. So there are multiple reasons why we need to go with Alternative B, which is the reduction of the King Waste Dam and using the Route East, uh, backfill. So that's the, my response, uh, to you on that. So if you, uh, if your letter states that, I think that will be fine. It should not impact mine life. It should not impact any of our activities in fact. Even in the future, if we, we want to continue to expand, it should not impact, uh, Robinson at all, in my opinion. So that, that to me is a better alternative over Alternative A. Now, the sage grass issue, we do have all the information from the state. We've been told how much money we, or how many mitigations we need to buy. And we started working with farmers or ranchers that already have the mitigations. We have that information. Hopefully that will go into the final EIS for everybody, uh, to see. So, um, those are the three, four points that I put together. Was there anything else that you brought up that I have not responded to?
No, Frederick, I, I appreciate your comments. The only other one that we had mentioned is, you know, the EIS itself is, is pretty quiet as far as fire mitigation. And I know you guys have, you know, probably an existing fire management plan that would be pretty easy to add aside patients who just, uh,
Okay.
You're a good one for doing that.
That, that's a good point. Uh, we will, uh, add that. But currently, if we do have fire within the footprint, which we call the Plan of Operations that have been approved since 94, we actually go out, we have a lot of, uh, fire waters that we use for, that's depression. Um, we go out and then we try to put that out ourselves. Now, if it gets out of hand, we do get the county involved. Or we get BLM involved, if it's, if it's outside the Plan of Operations, uh, boundary. Uh, but, uh, I will make note of that, and I will get that comment to, uh, BLM and our contractor writing the EIS to make sure that is spelled out clearly, uh, for, for the public as well. That's a good comment. Thank you very much.
Good job, Jeremy.
Okay, uh, listening to, uh, Mr. Partey and Jeremy, if there's nothing else, I have one. Can we go ahead and vote on this?
Yeah, it sounds like you have one more option, so.
Okay, so we can go ahead and take a motion on this item. Is there anything else that Frederick or Jeremy you guys want to add before we go to the motion? Harry, none? I'm gonna ask, go ahead, Jeremy.
No, no further comments from me, just to note that was a good discussion. I appreciate Frederick's feedback.
Yes, glad to work here. Thank you, Jeremy.
And I think the county appreciates both of you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that being said, let's, uh, I'll ask for a motion to approve the comment letter regarding the Draft EIS.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion?
Before we go down, now, we're going to go ahead and approve this letter to be put in now. We're not going to wait.
I think, I think based on where he went through it, of what he has written, and then the discussion with, with Frederick of what to add to it, and I did the EIS, the Draft EIS, I, I, I'm comfortable with moving forward with it.
Does the letter, do we have to give Jeremy direction as to what plan we want to emphasize our support for, or is it just general?
I, I, I think that he's, based on what we've seen in the past, I think that he was gonna follow that same footprint of support. And, uh, and outspoken already what the concerns were that should be maybe emphasized a little bit more.
So we're gonna emphasize Alternative B with, with the concern of.
Yes.
I, I, I think the points have been pretty well discussed, and, and I would, yeah, I, I just, I just wanted to make clear that we were going to go ahead and put the, the letter now. I really don't want to see us put in a late, a note saying we've got a letter coming. I don't want our response to look like lukewarm support. I, to, to say that our partnership with KGHM is, is priceless is an understatement. So, uh, I, I think it's an important message to, to families like Frederick's that, that we are in full support of.
We all good, Ken?
We're good.
Jeremy, we're good? Comments you heard?
Yeah.
Okay, and Frederick?
I was gonna say, Jeremy, if you have any questions or clarification, whether we don't hesitate to contact me.
Yep, and, and Jeremy, you call my contact too. He and I go to the Water Advisory Board, so. So, yeah, and you can always call me or contact me, uh, if you need further clarification or any of the items you've identified as well. But my final, uh, parting words is the same. Um, I have been here for six years, uh, always got support from this team. And I know I can always count on you, uh, to help us regardless of what we have going on through 44A and through all the EAs that we've done in the past. And truly, on my own behalf and the behalf of KGHM Robinson Mine, I want to thank the commissioners and the public as well for all the support we may have received from, uh, the commissioners, uh, or from the county as a whole. Um, since I have been here, and we truly appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Thank you, boy.
Thank you.
Jeremy, so, that being said, I guess we can move on.
You got a. A motion should really be a motion to sort of capture the discussion. I'm sure Jeremy's taken away what he needs to take away from this discussion so that can be incorporated into the letter that, that you end up signing, Mr. Chairman, so.
Okay, now we'll look at the motion. Do we get a motion? Yeah, you.
We got a motion.
Or Lori.
Yeah, I thought that I had expanded on it. Really, I didn't.
I want to make sure we got it right.
We're gonna be emphasizing, uh, Alternative B. And, um, there's gonna be the addition of, uh, the fire notation so far as fire suppression. And, uh, also the support of the mine itself and the working relationship.
Okay.
I amend my second.
Lori made the motion, Travis made his second and amended it. So any further discussion by anybody on the board? Harry, none? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, pass unanimous. We're just about to a 10:30. We haven't had a short break.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thanks, Jeremy.
We'll take a short break. We'll come back to the, Mike, are you back on Zoom? Are you on Zoom?
I know how to answer this anyway, so. He is on Zoom, but I know what to answer it, so.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah.
Let's do it real quick. Let's do it real quick.
And we also have Rudy here, too.
I know, I'll do that when we get back. But we want to go back to Mike's real quick. Is that okay, Brian?
I mean, I'm gonna be here either way, so I don't know if we need to squeeze this one in, you know? Like to get everybody else out of here.
Yeah, well, I'm working on it. Okay. Be back in five minutes.
I can, I grab, uh, me and Bill got a question for you.
Oh, sure.
So.
Yeah, you, Bill?
Wanna jump out and talk to Brad quick?
Oh, you go by email. Thank you.
Next is the Phil Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and can, um, if I'm going to recommend to you? Real quick, yeah.
Things are going very well, and we're gonna go back to our timed items and get everybody on time, if I can. Um, timed items are on page three, and we're at the 10, uh, 10:30. On timed items are on page three, and we're at the 10:30, and it's the Justice Center Project. And it's a discussion update on the process with the Justice Center Project, including a financial update by Elizabeth. Please, let me go ahead.